We'll let everybody know before we get started that the, we are on YouTube Live now. So all the mics are taking everything out, supposedly. Okay, I have 6:30. I call this meeting to order. Would anybody like to say a prayer tonight? If not, join me in prayer, please. Lord has come for this evening. We give thanks to allowing us to gather, to do the work for the city. We ask you to be in our hearts and our minds as we do the work for the city for the benefit of all. We ask these things as we pray in Jesus's name. Amen. And please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rommel is absent. Councilmember Morris.
Present.
Councilmember Harburg.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
And Councilmember Shetron.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you very much. First on the agenda tonight is the review approval of the December 20th, '21 council meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Next on the agenda is department reports and financials. I'd entertain a motion to approve as presented. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. There is no planning commission report for tonight. We didn't have a meeting in November. No unfinished business. First order of business is on ordinance 2022-01. Would you read the title, please?
Ordinance 2022-01 and ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 0-2021-01, establishing the rules and procedures to be used by the Ward City Council declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I'll open forward for discussion. This is our annual first of the year ordinance we have to do. There's a couple minor changes you'll notice in red in the document, the attachment, but essentially it's the same as it was last two, three years.
On part three.
Yes.
Section C.
Okay.
Where it says anything after the seventh day. I would like to have that change to be held for the next meeting.
Let's see. The court of assembly. It's simple. We don't provide safety. Seven days.
Oh, it's.
Which section is that?
Section three.
Section three, agenda.
Part C.
I think you, I think you mean the last line, reports are likely delivered to the city clerk after the deadline. It will be distributed as soon as possible.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
That's what you mean.
But anything after the seven days delivered to us needs to wait until the next meeting?
I would, you know, I understand what you're saying. When I was sitting in your chair, I agreed to the same thing. But I'll tell you, there are things sometimes that either A, come up last minute that we're not aware of, or quite frankly, sometimes we just forget about them, and that's an apology on my part. We try not to do that. I really do. But I think your district council also has the ability to table an item till the next, next council meeting, whether or not it's on the agenda or not. So I'd like to see it to stay in there. Discussion?
That's my only request.
Any other discussion about the attachment? Hearing none. Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing no further discussion. I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2022-01 on the first reading. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harburg.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
No.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
No.
Councilmember Mor, um, sorry, yes, Morris.
Yes.
It's three to two.
Motion dies for a lack of a four vote. The current ordinance 2021-01 is still in effect. Counsel, I will bring this ordinance back up next month. It is required by law that we do this. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2022-01. Read the title, please.
Resolution 2022-01, a resolution to amend Resolution 2020-29, the annual operating budget for calendar year 2021.
Counsel, this, this resolution and the following resolutions are standard for, after the first year, to clean up the budget from the previous year. I'll open the floor for comment. Hearing none, I entertain a motion. Do we have any public comments? Excuse me. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2022-01.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember Harburg.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
And Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you very much, counsel. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2022-02. Read the title, please.
Resolution 2022-02, a resolution to revise Resolution 2020-28, the annual Ward Water and Sewer System operating budget for calendar year 2021.
I'll open the floor for discussion. This again is the cleanup of the 2021 budget. Hearing no discussion. Any public discussion? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2022-02.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harburg.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
Yes.
And Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-02 is approved. Thank you, counsel. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2022-03. Read the title, please.
Resolution 2022-03, a resolution repealing and replacing Resolution 2021-09, establishing minimum hourly rates and salary for members of the Ward Police Department.
Counsel, if you remember, last year we established some set standards, set wages for the police department, and upcoming, the next one is for water and wastewater. This just brings it up to the 5.9% COLA rate that we had, you had approved last year in the budget. Open the floor for discussion. Public discussion. I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2022-03.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
And Councilmember Harburg.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 2022-03 is approved. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2022-04. Read the title, please.
Resolution 2022-04, a resolution repealing and replacing Resolution 2021-19, establishing minimum hourly rates and salaries for members of the Ward Water Wastewater Department.
Open the floor for discussion. Again, counsel, this is to bring it up to the 5.9% standard that you had approved already. Any discussion? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On this, should be determined. How is that determined and when? Does that just begin there? We all meet on the other end?
That'd be with my authority under the budget. Any further discussion?
So the four men, that's just basically, could I think, I mean, there's no cap?
Well, within the budget. I mean, there's a line item on the budget for the four men line. I can't go above that without coming to y'all.
I'm going to ask you all to use your mics. It's been brought to my attention that people are having a hard time hearing you guys.
Okay. Just remember, it's only three at a time, so. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2022-04.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mc, Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember Harburg.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 2022-04 is approved. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2022-05. Read the title, please.
Resolution 2022-05, a resolution authorizing the mayor or city clerk to enter into a contract with Davis Playgrounds to construct inclusive playground equipment as a part of the Arkansas State Parks Outdoor Matching Grant Program.
This is a part of our grant that we got from Arkansas Park and Tourism. I will make one change to the title. It's not inclusive. It's ADA compliant. There's a slight difference, but we'll make that change. There are two bids before you. There's a significant amount of difference in the two of them. Oh, Michelle, would you come forward, please? This is our park and recreation director. If you have any questions for her about this. By the way, she's doing a bang-up job. Mayor of both companies, if you look at each bid, and if you divide it by the square foot that is listed on each of them, the one for 71 is much smaller than the other one. It's actually, the Davis Playground is $60 a square foot, and the Bear contract calls for $81 a square foot.
Do you have that on your computer? You can put it up because.
I do have it, yes, ma'am.
I don't have it here and.
I don't have the bids, but I have the pictures.
Pictures is what I'm.
Yeah. That's the, that's the Davis one right there. And this is the Bear, if you will.
And the Davis is bigger?
It is.
Larger, yeah.
Or 10,000 more?
Yeah, it's much bigger. It's poured in rubber base, so it'll be accessible by hand, by wheelchairs. And then again, it's ADA compliant, according, not all-inclusive.
And where at the park is this getting?
Just down from the pavilion.
On that side of the park.
It was the tree line?
Yep.
Yeah. Just right off the side of the brand-new concession stand.
Is this bid just for that, or is that the concession stand and the ball field?
Oh, no, no, that's totally different. It's been approved. It's been under construction. This is for the ball, this is for the park playground equipment only.
What's the difference between ADA compliant and all-inclusive?
All-inclusive, you'd have the ability to, like, set a wheelchair in a swing and swing the person while they're still in a wheelchair. This is just ADA compliant to much that, and I think I can zoom in a little bit.
An inclusive would have a ramp basically to where wheelchair can get up into the actual structure and things like that. This, the ADA compliant will have a transfer station, so, and then other objects download where they can, wheelchair accessible as far as getting up there because of the pore implies the rubber. But transfer station, so if the childer is able to get out and get into, there's a step there that they could easily transfer from a chair to get into the structure. That's the ADA versus the wheelchair, where the wheelchair would just go up into the structure.
If we got into all-inclusive, we're talking a whole lot more money. And this is, you know, just looking down the stream, this is probably phase one of what we'd like to do later on when this gets started. And it satisfies the grant that we already have from Park and Tourism for doing this. Part of this is funded out of them. It's a 50-50 match, not the entire amount. There's about $24,000 left out of that grant that'll go toward this, what, pick up the rest.
So the all-inclusive would be the one that the wheelchairs could play on?
Yes.
And right now, I know it's more expensive.
Yeah.
But we also already have a playground at Ward Central that people play on constantly already. So why would we not shoot for an all-inclusive to allow?
Well, again, it's a lot more expensive. The grant, the grantor allowed us to cull back on this because of the cost fluctuations that they've been.
I see what you're saying, though. We can have two.
But we have a playground, yeah, you have two.
Well, and also at the school, I did go and look, I've kind of looked at a lot, but the school doesn't have anything that is pore in place. The only thing they have is the wheelchair swings, which are actually accessible through grass. Everything else has the border rubber mulch or wood, engineered wood mulch.
Right.
Which isn't as, so it's, it's not maybe as far as the structure goes, but a wheelchair could actually get up to this structure where the school is mulched and, you know.
Right, 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 right. No, I understand that. I was talking about kids that can't get out of their chair that could actually just roll up and hook into the swing. I've seen those.
Yeah. And they do have a couple of those swings as far as that goes. But also with this, we'd be able to add to it in time as, as need grows. We'd be able to, it's, the pore in place is going to last a long time, and we'd be able to add structures to that as the need of maybe disabilities or anything like that changes.
This also gives the ability for children who are out there and their parents are playing softball, they can play on the playground, which happens frequently.
Lots.
Do these bids include fencing to keep up with kids that may be a little more challenging at times?
No, it does not. This is, this includes what you're showing right there, the flooring and the device. Fencing, we can do on our own.
To get one wheelchair swing.
Um, I mean, we can add to it. As far as getting something included in there, I'd be more than happy to get a price for that. Prices have gone up significantly. So that was the only other, was the prices.
I would like to take that, if that's something the council wants to do, I'd like to take that on a separate project because we're up against a clock on this, so to speak.
As well as the fencing?
Part of it, fencing, we take it up to you.
City could do the fencing, like you said.
Right, city can do fencing.
But it's just a quick phone call to ask them how much for a chair swing, right?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking that because if we do the.
I don't know how a chair swing.
Beyond boundaries tournament there again, we, that's all we have is kids in wheelchairs. So it might be a fun thing to have for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or at least just do wheelchair swings.
Yep.
I mean, we don't have to do all the other expensive stuff. No, no, I don't mean.
There's no swings on that one?
No, I don't mean none of the regular swings. I mean as far as the add-on.
An additional.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean.
Because it's probably the other stuff that's really expensive.
It is.
I'd like to see that as well.
Would the council want to table this for tonight and call a special council meeting to look this over again because we really need to get moving on this?
I have no problem with a special meeting.
Okay, so I need a.
I have no problem.
I'd like to make a motion to table this for a special meeting.
Okay. So we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. To table resolution, whatever this was. 2020-05. Yeah, 2020-05. Now, let's go back to the bidders and see what it costs to put a single. Correct? Okay, a single wheelchair access. Okay.
If it don't cost much, let's do a couple.
Well.
It's going to be expensive.
Yeah, they're not. And, and we have to, I mean, cost are a factor. All right. So we have a motion, second, table this, and let's do a little more research. We'll call a special meeting to address this soon. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda is ordinance. No, 2020-06, okay. Got it out of order. Resolution 22, 2022, is what that's supposed to say. 06 on the screen. Read the title, please.
Resolution 2022-06, a resolution authorizing the mayor or city clerk to enter into a contract with Central Arkansas Planning and Development District to administer the American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated to the city of Ward.
Hmm? I said that, yeah. Yeah, it's supposed to be 2020-06 on the screen, but I didn't put it that way. Anyway.
So this means that they'll decide what to do with our money?
No. They administer the fund. In the federal funding world, there is a ton of documentation. And the municipal, if you had a grant authority on, on staff, this would be no problem. But smaller cities cannot afford that. And so you, you contract with a company to do this. We went out for bids, got three bids. CAPDD, who we do business with all the time anyway, they administer our funds before, all the time. They're administering the, the Park and Tourism Grant Fund. That's what they do. I had two, three other, or two other engineering firms that put in a bid, but they didn't, probably RPF had quite right, and they didn't give us any pricing on what, they just gave a price per hour, but not how much they were going to charge overall. CPD, this is what, one of the things they do, and they're very good at it.
Okay.
So.
I make a motion, we accept.
I have a question, though. Okay, so we're going to pay $33,000 and change. How much other money are we paying for fees annually for this? And would it be cheaper to go with hiring somebody? Because we're $33,000 for this, they're administering the, the other grants and stuff like that. So what type of service fees are we paying annually versus?
How much are we paying CAPDD annually? I don't know off the top of my head. But it's, it's, if you hired a grant authority, he'd probably pay, probably $60,000 plus benefits. We're not there yet. I wish we were, but we're not there yet. I don't, I don't think it's cost-effective to do that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 22, 2022-06.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember Harburg.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
And Councilmember Shetron.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 2022-06 is approved. Now with the ordinance, where did I go? Out there. Ordinance 2022-02, correct? Yeah. Read the title, please.
Ordinance 2022-02 and ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 0-198 and ordinance establishing a procedure for the purchase, sale, or exchange of property in the city of Ward and for other purposes.
I'll open up the floor for comment. This is update our spending on our purchase order authorities as allowed by state law. And you look down in section B, beginning in 2025, this will be updated according to COLA rules after that.
I would like to make a comment that as a council member, my job is to watch the fiscal of the city and take care of the citizens' money. I feel that $35,000 is too much for one person. And with it being a council approval, that gives us six people and their opinions. So I think $35,000 is a bit too much.
Well, I think it's appropriate and it's authorized by law. But I think it's appropriate in this time and age. When this was originally set up, 1998, things have gone out of sky, lately, bad. My theory is, and this may not come true. My theory is at four o'clock on one Friday afternoon, we have a wastewater pump go down there. I don't have a backup, and I need to get one on order. I don't have time to call a special meeting if it's over my $10,000, current $10,000 authority. As prices go up, things are just getting more expensive. And I think personally, I'm pretty sure that, that I've been physically responsible for the last three years. And I brought things to this council. It doesn't necessarily have to be brought to this council, but just to show you that I think, you know, I'm very transparent in what we do. I just think for the business, the running of the business of the city, the mayor needs to have this ability to, up to the limit of the law, without having to call a special meeting. But that's just my, that's just my, the law allows this. The mayor of cities first class have up $35,000 or some authority.
And what's the first class, just our level?
Yeah.
Of $6,000 or less, or whatever it is?
No, it's $2,500 or more. We're city of first class.
So what do other cities have, like Cabot and?
I don't know.
Cabot has $10,000, and I know Austin is at $2,500.
Yeah. A lot are going to be changing, too, because it just doesn't make any sense.
But I'm also, I'm with Robin on this very much so. I mean, even $10,000, I feel, is probably too much. I think $5,000 would be more mine. Because like you say, is, our job is to part of the budget and to maintain, you know, and if you get $35,000, not saying you, but the next mayor, the position, not the person, the position, could go buy a car, could go buy something else, you know? You know, and without council approval, now you're just taking that stuff of government out of the way.
But you also got to understand that the mayor is, it's still accounted for you. And if he spends over 30, he spends whatever. You can question him on that. Plus, there's federal and state audits that occur twice a year that will look into all that.
Well, you could buy a car, and that'd be completely legitimate. You're doing everything right for the law, because you feel like you need one.
Right.
So the audit won't catch that, but the taxpayers won't pay for it. And we, we are the checks and balances of the budget. We're the ones who make sure that the city's run financially sound, you know? And just because, and I'm not saying you as a person, but the mayor as a position could take it and say, well, I need to do whatever, and you go get.
Well, the mayor's also the appointed CEO. And, you know, with, with your approval and appropriation of the budget has authority to spend. I'm just, I'm just saying that in today's era, and the things are priced the way they are, it just makes sense to me that you, the mayor has authority, higher authority than what was allocated back in 1998. it just makes sense to me that the mayor has the authority, higher authority than what was allocated back in nineteen ninety-eight. But, but it's your decision. That's my opinion on what the mayor should have the ability to do.
I think ten thousand's probably a little low with the prices the way they are, but I'm not sure that we need to go all the way to thirty-five, aren't we?
Just for discussion and a motion.
I have a citizen that made a comment.
Okay.
As a citizen, they think that it's appropriate due to the cost of items, and they recognize that you still have to stay within, I'm sorry. They think that it's appropriate due to the cost of items, and that they recognize that you still have to stay within the budget that was set forth.
Well, I would have stayed with the budget regardless.
So.
Good discussion, council.
I definitely see both sides. I mean, because I actually hunt, and the price of that is crazy now.
Right.
So I mean, everything's up, I mean, almost triple in price for some things.
That's my fear. We can't buy pumps, and Bruce is not here tonight, he's.
Yeah, but you keep saying, we've already done the backup pumps. We've paid for those.
Some of them, but if one of our big vacuum pumps goes down, that's, no. I mean, I only know thirty-five thousand would actually down.
You'd have to have a meeting and would vote on them, because those are expensive.
Yeah, we'd probably have to have a meeting and vote on them anyway, on those. But I bet it's, you know, up to council. I think the mayor should have that authority, but it's up to council.
I did have four citizens tell me that they felt that that was way too high.
Okay. So what is your recommendation, council? Leave as is? Raise it to?
Either leave it as is, or I'd like to lower it, but that's just my opinion.
I think lowering it puts us in a precarious position.
Yeah, they've gotta be able to buy stuff.
I like proposed twenty, and let's see if it's an issue.
I would agree with twenty.
Is that a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion to raise the spending authority for the mayor to twenty thousand dollars. We have a second?
I second that.
Okay, further discussion?
I disagree with that, I don't feel that's a good idea.
I don't either, I also have a question.
Sure.
I was about to say. So this amount that we're at now, the ten thousand dollars, that was set in place when?
Nineteen ninety-eight.
And how many times do you think that you've had to exceed that with council approval since you've been in the position?
Quite a few times, I mean, yeah.
Special meetings?
No, normally, I don't think we've ever called a special meeting just for, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I don't think we've ever called one to go over ten thousand. May have, yes, sir. I thought you had a question.
So that's a three hundred and fifty percent increase from what's on the books? That could possibly change in, what, three years? Just so that I'm clear, is that right? Yeah. And you haven't had to?
Change in three years.
You said it's gonna be law in twenty twenty-five?
No, 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 in twenty twenty-five, whatever the ceiling is, the ceiling at thirty-five thousand by law will go up.
Okay.
According to COLA.
But ours will automatically change, okay.
Yeah, you'd have to do another ordinance in order to.
I think, in my opinion, we're good where we are. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to raise it twenty-five, uh, twenty thousand, excuse me, twenty thousand. So let's address the motion first. So roll call on the raising, or setting it twenty-five, twenty thousand dollars.
Councilmember Harbort?
No.
Councilmember Hefner?
No.
Councilmember McMahon?
Yes.
Councilmember Chatron?
No.
And Councilmember Morris?
Yes.
Okay, the motion dies in three to two, so we're back to square one. At thirty-five thousand or whatever you want to, motion again.
I make a motion to, I make, I make a motion to leave it at ten thousand.
We have a motion to leave it at ten thousand?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon?
No.
Councilmember Chatron?
Yes.
And Councilmember Morris?
No.
And Councilmember Harbort?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two. The authority is set at ten thousand dollars as was before. We will still publish this, okay. Now, at ten thousand dollars, I need a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-zero-two on its first reading.
Motion.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, roll call, please, for its first reading.
Uh, that would be McMahon, Councilmember McMahon?
Yes.
Councilmember Chatron?
No.
Councilmember Morris?
Yes.
Councilmember Harbort?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Orange twenty-two-two-two-dash-zero-two passes on its first reading. Ma'am, sir. You are correct.
Yeah, with the, the.
I thought I had it for, who that?
No, it was three to two.
Okay, my, I wrote down wrong.
This last time Anna voted no.
We're talking about the first one.
We're talking about the first one with ten thousand.
Or you can.
Oh, okay.
So it stays as.
That's correct. So the motion didn't carry for ten thousand.
Thank you, Chris.
I make a motion, we go to at least fifteen thousand.
Alright, we have a motion for fifteen.
Second.
A motion, second. Roll call. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So we have a motion, second, to raise it to fifteen thousand.
Councilmember Chatron?
No.
Councilmember Morris?
Yes.
Councilmember Harbort?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hefner?
No.
And Councilmember McMahon?
Yes.
So that is.
Three to.
Yep.
Counsel, I would entertain a motion to table this ordinance till the next meeting. The ordinance that is currently in place stays in place at ten thousand dollars.
I would like to know more of what expenses, like you're talking about, okay, we have a no kidding emergency, we need to order these parts and stuff. So you gotta give us a greater scope of what you're gonna spend the money on, because I think that my idea, and my, my feeling is, you know, I just don't want you going out and spending fifteen, twenty thousand dollars just because I want something new. But like, emergency parts and things like that, I understand, I have no problem with that. But things that could be over daily expenses and things like that, you know, that we can wait till council meetings and stuff.
I agree with you, but it's also in the budget. He can't go over the budget that we've already approved.
Right.
So it's not like he's getting any extra.
Right.
He's still in the budget. And then stuff does happen. I mean, let's say it snowed and the new salter went down, that's gonna cost more than thirty-five thousand. I mean, he needs approval. He's not going out of budget, he's not leaving the budget at all.
Counsel, I understand. But I also understand today, and you all know this, things are much higher than they have been forever. And it just gives the ma, the mayor better management. That if something, I don't know, it just gives better management for the mayor. If, if, well, for instance, if I got a police car that goes down. I got a police car that goes down, and I find one that I can replace it real quick for over ten but less than thirty-five. I still have to come back to you all to get that done, but if I need it right now and it's available, those kinds of things are the things that I worry about. And it could happen, it may not happen, may never, ever happen. And I'm okay with leaving it at ten thousand dollars, people, that I have.
I want to say something real quick.
Sure.
You know, anybody that understands risk management or disaster recovery, this is kind of one of those pieces that you'd put in place if there ever was a natural disaster or anything that he has to react to, it kind of would give him that ability. As the city clerk, I see resolutions coming across my desk, and I was having lots of resolutions that never were there in previous administrations, that don't have to be. But because of the transparency of this administration, he brings a lot of his spending and what goes on in the city operations to the forefront for you guys to see. So that speaks for itself. And then like, like he said, we, he can't go outside of the budget that you guys have set for. So this is not like a willy-nilly, let's have thirty-five thousand to go spend it on what he thinks or wants to spend it on. It's, it's more or less a disaster recovery plan in place in case there is an emergency.
And you said that ten thousand was set in ninety-eight?
Yeah.
I think we can all agree that ten thousand dollars doesn't buy the same amount as it did in ninety-eight.
No. Chris, I got a question, if you'll come forward. The current ordinance on the table is for thirty-five thousand dollars, and we've had back and forth about what, and can't agree or get four votes. Can I change the ordinance here to ten thousand? Because that's what we have currently. The ordinance itself also puts in place some new procedures for purchase orders that we're currently doing, it just puts it in writing. As the author and as the CEO and who brought the ordinance forward, can I arbitrarily change that to ten thousand dollars, which is currently what it is, and see if we can get the ordinance passed? So the remaining portions of the ordinance, the POs, the purchases under a hundred thousand, the department heads authority, and the, which is what we do currently anyway, but this just puts it in writing. Can I do that?
Yes, you can modify this ordinance to the ten thousand dollar limit and pass it.
So I can change it to ten thousand, which is not moving it up or down, just as it is.
Yes, leave the spending level the same.
Just a modification of procedures.
And then later, you could bring this back to council when we have a full, full membership here.
Sure.
And move to amend.
Sure. Okay, counsel, that's what I want to do. I'm gonna pull this, I'm gonna put it back to ten thousand dollars in the ordinance. So we're ten thousand dollars, which is what, in this current ordinance, this town says, online, section one, ten thousand dollars, which is currently the approval authority of the mayor. The rest of it is out of state law. Even the comment on section one, item B, is just an informational comment anyway. So counsel, with that in mind.
I have one more question before you go. Now, I know, let's remember we were talking about emergency funds and stuff like that for disaster and stuff. Is there something we can go in there and actually put an emergency clause that, okay, if an actual viable emergency, like, let's say a pump goes up, something that we need like right now? I don't constitute, you need a new cop car right this moment at a, in an emergency. I would like to, now that, I'd be willing to up that.
But what are, what are we all worried about? It's already in the budget.
Right.
Nothing's gonna change.
I'm just saying, I don't, I don't mind raising the price up, it's like commercial, like it's.
But it's not, it's not a big deal because it's already budgeted, it's budgeted.
I got you, I'm just talking for my.
I don't know why we're getting over thirty-five thousand.
Well, the discussion is about the mayor's authority to sign a check above ten thousand dollars without council approval. Mr. City Clerk, or City Attorney, excuse me. I don't know if that's even legal to put a clause in that during an emergency situation, who determines the emergency? I mean, if you had a pump go down at four o'clock on a Sunday afternoon.
You would have to have some sort of ordinance that states the conditions for the mayor to basically declare a citywide disaster. And then what do you, you know, you're going down a rabbit hole.
Okay, right, right.
I didn't know that was.
That sounds really complicated.
Well, and the federal government has these things, right? The state, the governor can declare a state emergency, and it releases this emergency fund that's been set aside for him to start spending. We don't have that.
Well, even at that, even if we had a fund set aside for that, you still have the spending limit.
Yes.
That would not kick in. I think the auditors would have a heyday with this.
Okay. Can I answer that then?
Yeah, I don't, I appreciate your line of thought, but I don't think that's a good idea.
Okay.
So if right now you got a.
I know it's a gray area that I don't think we want to open up.
As of right now, you've got a motion on the table, not a motion, but the, an ordinance in front of you that we've decreased the thirty-five thousand dollar amount to ten thousand so that the amount stays as is. But the other portions of the ordinance will be amended, amending the oh-one-ninety-eight to comply with state law.
Still replaces it.
Yes, yes, okay. So that's what council would be voting on.
Okay, counsel, I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-zero-two on its first reading with the ten thousand dollar limit.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Pardon me? Okay, okay. Roll call on first reading, please.
Councilmember McMahon, I mean Morris, sorry.
Yes.
Councilmember Harbort?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chatron?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-zero-two is approved on its first reading. Hearing no motion to suspend the rules, we will put this on its second reading next month. Next on agenda is the mayor's report, if you'll hand me a mayor's report so I can read it. Mayor's report for tonight. Highway three sixty-seven, three nineteen intersection, if you've driven past it, there is movement. There's dirt being moved, there's stuff being moved, utilities are being moved. We have progress, step one. I'm not sure when step two is gonna start yet, but step one has started at least. Sarts three sidewalk project is ongoing. The vacuum system is ninety-five percent complete, there's some dress-up things that Bruce said need to still be done, but that'll all be done before they get paid. The Parks and Recreation Tourism Grant, the construction has begun, preliminary discretion, construction has begun on concession stand. We'll discuss in a special meeting about the playground equipment again. The palm reader, fingerprint reader that you had approved several months ago is finally all in. It had supply channel problems getting current parts in. And training will be this Tuesday or Thursday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, being Tuesday, okay. And then it'll be up and running, and we start using that. The American Rescue Plan continuing work on a request for proposal to replace all the meeting meters with an AMR or an AMI system. I did submit a pre-application to the ANRC's Wastewater Advisory Committee, which is a requirement that you have to do if you wanted to borrow any or get a grant from Arkansas Natural Resources, and the name has been changed, I can't remember what it is now, but that's what it is. The new telephone system that you all approved last month should be installed and operational by next month. New camera system is still ongoing, there's cameras on back order. And that application submitted to Metro Plan doesn't belong there. The unified code that Planning Commission has been working on for a few months, and some of you have been involved with also, is continuing. That's developed by the Metro Plan Small Cities Council, and it will, when it's all said and done, combine subdivisions and zoning regulations. We'll tell you that when we get it to this level, this is a major change in how we do business in the city of Ward as far as subdivisions and zoning. The Emergency Operations Plan, we have got it pretty much complete. Just some minor tweaks that'll go out to departments this week and should come to council next week or so for review. It'll be electronic, because it's three hundred and fifty pages. Something for you to read on a good Sunday evening. We're also working on our continuing operations program, which acquired by state law, we're updating that. And I have submitted application with your approval for last month's resolution to Metro Plan for starts four. Do we have any public comment on non-agenda items?
I've got a question.
Yes.
How would replacing the water meters come under the American Rescue Plan?
It's allowed by that. In fact, it is when it first came out, that was one of the, their broadband and water wastewater infrastructure was the two major items. There's a couple other things that didn't fall in our approval, but yeah, it is. It's jobs creation, and the fact that the, then totaled Americans, you know, water and wastewater system is sorely lacking in upgrading. Next Planning Commission meeting is January twenty-fourth at seven PM. It's got a pretty good agenda coming on. We have a, I can tell you this, there's been a site plan for a new subdivision out off East Main, two hundred and eighty houses, I believe. It's not into city limits, but it's inside our planning district, so it has come for us. And our next city council meeting is February twenty-first. And our next city council meeting is February twenty-first, unless I, well, I will be calling a special one before then. Yeah, for the park, so.
We make special meetings on Monday, on Mondays?
You know, if I can get the information this week, I'll try to do it this week, but Monday's better for you, I mean. It'll be Wednesday, but anybody else got days that you can't do special meetings? Fridays you cannot? Okay, so we're down to Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday? Okay. Alright, we'll try to do it on Monday, but if, like I said, if I get this, like I said, we need to move fast on this, I need to get this contract let on this, so we get it into system, so we can get the state to barrel it down on us. Anyway, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All those in favor say aye and get up.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a great time, thank you, counsel.